We're ready for that.
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilmember leaves an implication. The council leader put the plea to the police force.
Please bow your head. I only finally thank you for all the blessings that we have received here in this great city. Please be with us, keep our city healthy and prosperous, and be with us and help us to make the best decisions that we can as part of the city government. In your name we pray.
Amen. Our plea to the police is to the land and the United States of America, and to the Republic of Florida, to say that one nation, on its own, in its own legal and justice law.
Please have a seat. Thank you as always for being here. Special thanks to David Evans. Glad to see you for being here too. Good to see all my people here. All right. At this time, I ask for any public comments or any public comments out there. There are none, so we'll pass on them to the whole business. Whole business discussion, police department units. Councilmember Evans and Chief Duncan, you guys have that? We just want to hear about some plans.
So, um, Chief, Ms. Carroll, I know you're involved in this, so if you could help keep out what you need to as far as explaining exactly what we had to do.
Sure.
On the last discussion, we had to discuss three different options, but there were some more questions about the decision. So, I would do, but Ms. Carroll, we did devise a different plan of action, and if she will, she can go ahead and present the proposal that she presented to council as to options that she did on the, on the, on the, like I said.
Oh, the schedule?
Yes.
Okay. You all should have this schedule in your folders and, actually, Chief had started on this schedule, and then I added a few things to it. The first option was initially to buy the three Ford Explorers, and we were trading four vehicles. The trade in allowance was forty-nine thousand dollars. The balance due would have been ninety-four thousand dollars, and we would have needed a little bit extra from the budget. The budget is eighty-six thousand one hundred, not thirty-six thousand one hundred from general fund, fifty thousand from SPOSS. The second option was to lease the vehicles, and that would have been to lease five Ford Explorers and one Chevy Tahoe. We would have traded in seven vehicles, and the trade in allowance was a hundred and three thousand dollars. The balance due was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine one six, and if we were to lease, I think it would have been sixty-three thousand eight ninety-three for each of the three years. Interest would have been eleven thousand seven sixty-three in total, or if we wanted to pay and pull, we could amend the budget and use the thirty-six thousand to reimburse insurance costs to amend the budget, and then the other excess could come from SPOSS, the fifty-seven eighty-one six, if man council is still going with the six to the proceeds for three.
Last time we discussed it, I guess you were somewhat in favor of proposal two, but proposal one will save us twelve thousand dollars in interest. And if you get proposal one, the way I understand it is we would just get three vehicles this year, this fiscal year, additional three vehicles next fiscal year, and it'll all be paid for at meetings. Is that correct?
That's correct, if you want. And I think with option one, when Chief presented the options last meeting, option one was to buy the three with the trade in of four. Option two was to lease the six with the trade of seven vehicles, and, you know, I just kind of said, you know, instead of leasing, and I know twelve thousand dollars isn't a huge amount of interest, but instead of leasing, because that was the direction you all really wanted to go in, we could amend the budget for the additional thirty-six thousand out of the general fund from insurance proceeds we got from one of the vehicles, and then, you know, we have had, SPOSS has been up a little bit, and, you know, we can take the rest from that. So those were the two, was either buy the three or lease the six, something at the last meeting. And I think you all said something about leasing at the last meeting.
Does anybody else want to say anything about it?
Yeah, I have another question. Oh, go ahead, Chief.
One more point. After the question came about the leasing, I found that when I did the numbers of, it was a straight lease. There was no down payment as well as listed on the vehicle. So, the one seventy-nine was the amount of money that was probably owed to the company, but I didn't go back and find the end, that we did have the eighty-six thousand dollars from the budget and the thirty-six thousand one hundred dollars from the old vehicle that was present. So, that would take money off of that lease program.
Oh, add that one comment that the city attorney made at the meeting two weeks ago was that, she said, as long as the lease agreement is the same, that she did get her chance to look at it, it is a wholly different document than the one, because the original one she referred to, she actually helped brand and craft the first time around. They continue to use it, but it appears they've gone a little different.
I was wondering about that, and she said it is a lengthy lease, but it is standard, and she saw nothing out of our area in the lease.
And by the city attorney reviews leases?
Yes, sir.
If there is anything in there that we can't legally bind ourselves to based on state law, it comes out.
Sure, yes, sir.
So, it really doesn't matter what lease is used, it's going to be a lease that we can, we can sign and be bound by. So, we're not talking about going on leasing, so we don't need to worry about that issue. But the last question that I have is that, based on the proposals that we had and the information that we've done, which one costs us less? I know we saved the twelve thousand dollars in interest, but does saving the twelve thousand dollars in interest and buying us, buying the vehicles save us money over leasing the vehicle? That's the question that I have.
To, my thought pattern on that would be that, yes, option one would be to save us money, but if we do not get rid of all six of these now, we're going to pay it on the end, because the trade, our trade in value is going to go down. It was, he did give us some extra money on the last trade I had, uh, exposed him about, but the first trade I want to really get rid of, they're very high mouth and there are a lot of problems with them, he just bugged them the price.
But we're planning on getting rid of those vehicles either way.
Yes, sir.
I know we're talking about buying three this fiscal year and then selling four.
That's correct, buying three next fiscal year.
And then buying three, and you just keep in mind, everybody, our fiscal year starts in July, so it's not, it's not a year away. It's just a few months away. Nothing else, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Okay. And if they have a motion, if somebody wants to make a motion, we'll go this way. I'll look at it. Do you have a motion?
A motion to, are you looking for a motion to approve option one?
Any options anywhere.
Yeah, I think that's the one we've been discussing, and I would approve that we adopt option one, as it is presented on our breakout here.
A second. Motion of the second. And to show the discussion. Okay, what this means, we're going to adopt that option, and authorize the chief to go ahead and do that, and after we do this, then we'll do a resolution to allow him to dispose of the four vehicles.
I do have one other point that I'd like to say now that we're at special, Mr. Mayor, is that I know you talked about this at the last council meeting, you made the decision, and at this point, I have oversight over the police department. I would like to be involved in changing it from the beginning, if we're going to change. So, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Instead of hearing about the capital stuff.
It's not really done, because it wasn't done until the motion was.
I understand, I mean, not so much.
Okay. All right, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All vote same time. Okay, Chief, what you got there is probably to buy three cars right now, we're going to pay for them, and we're going to get rid of the other four. And then do a resolution now to give you the authority to get rid of the other four. The resolution will actually call it excess, and that, that gives you legal needs to be transferred or settled or favored.
Okay, sir.
Okay?
So, so, so the resolution, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it's a note that just says that this is exhibit A, and this exhibit consists of these vehicles, these four vehicles that we've been talking about, and it says that, that they have to be sold for more than five hundred dollars. Okay? And that, basically, that is based on the state law, the laws of the state of Georgia, and basically, that is the way of the council. So, Mr. Mayor, I move we approve this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Have a second, members. Have a second. Councilmember Bird, I just, this review, like you says, provides authority for it. It involves three twenty-fifteen Chevrolet Tahos and a twenty-seventeen Ford Taurus. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So, we got them all identified. Okay. All with a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All vote same time? Disapproved. Thank you very much, everybody. All right, next item on here is, uh, nothing else on the whole business, we're doing business. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-one audit presentation. Malden Jenkins, CPAs and advisors, David Evans, please. You have the floor, sir.
Well, good evening, everyone. Hope you all are doing well. Again, my name is David Evans, I'm with Malden Jenkins. I was the partner who oversaw this year's audit of the city's financial statements, and certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all this evening to discuss the results of this year's audit. Don't want to take up too much of your time, but the purpose of this evening's presentation is to provide you all an overview of our independent auditors report, hit a few of the financial statement highlights, talk about the results of the compliance report that we issued in conjunction with the audit, discuss some information that the auditing standards require that we communicate to you all, and then obviously answer any questions that you all may have. I believe you all have two documents. The thick document is the financial statements themselves. The thinner document, the city's central logo on it, is something that we call our auditors' discussion analysis. This is an internal document that we prepare solely for your benefit. It provides you some general information on our firm. It gives you synopsis as of future auditing standards will be implemented in the upcoming years. It summarizes what I'll be discussing with you all here this evening. So, again, if you can, you know, have both these documents to follow along as I, as I speak this evening. Now, the financial statements themselves, they are the responsibility of management and members of the city council. As your independent auditors, our responsibility is to issue an opinion on these statements. We conduct our audits in accordance with general accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards, and I'm happy to say that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this year's report. This is what you want, this is the highest level of assurance that we can provide as your external auditor. What this means is that, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. As part of the audit, there is a compliance report that we also issue, it's toward the end of your financial statements, it's called the Yoda Report. Again, this is a report that is to report on the city's internal controls and your compliance with various laws and regulations, and I'm pleased to report to you all that we do not have any audit findings this year, meaning we noted no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the city's internal control during our audit. With all the new accounting standards that are being implemented this year, all the changes that are going on, and really just how complex the financial reporting process has become, it makes it all more impressive when I can report to a council that we're issuing a clean opinion with no audit findings. So, again, that's definitely something that you all should be proud of. To me, it really speaks volumes about the hard work done by your staff. This was our first year auditing the city, and, you know, as I'm sure you can imagine, there's a bit of a learning curve that comes with first year audits, both by the auditor and the audit team, but Carol really did a great job in giving us everything we needed. She was very accommodating, our audit team, and again, worked hard to address all of our questions, to give us the necessary information to get this audit finalized and reported and stated in a timely manner. So, this was as smooth as a first year audit that I've been a part of, and again, we have quite experience in transitioning to new clients, so Carol did a great job this year, and we certainly appreciate her hard work. Now, for a brief overview of the financial statements, as you look through your financial statements, one section I always like to point out is called the management's discussion analysis, otherwise it is the N D and A. This begins on page four of your, of your financial report, it's right after our audit opinion. If you can, I would strongly encourage everyone to read this section. The purpose of your N D and A is to make it easier for broader audience to better understand your financial statements, and it does this by providing a narrative explanation of the city's financial activity from the perspective of management. So, again, this section does a really good job of summarizing the basic financial statements and providing a broad analytical overview of the city's financial activities during the year. In addition, there's quite a bit of comparative information in that section, meaning there's financial activity for not only fiscal year twenty-one, but also, but also fiscal year twenty in that section. And to me, that adds a lot of value to the reader. It gives you a much better understanding of the current year financial activity when you have prior year financial activity available for preparing purposes. So, again, I certainly understand you all might necessarily wanting to read these financial statements cover to cover, but if you can, I would strongly encourage you to read the N D and A. Now, the city-based financial statements, they are broken down into three components, the first of which being your government-wide financial statements. If you all would, if you have, if you all would turn to page five of our auditors' discussion analysis. Again, page five, it briefly talks about this component. Again, the government-wide financial statements, they provide a broad view of the city's operations in a manner similar to what you would see in a private sector business. All of your funds in this section are either combined under a, under a government activities column or a business-type activities column. You know, unless anybody has any specific questions, I really won't go into this section in detail. This is really the only time you'll see the, the city's financial activities reported in this manner. In the daily operations of the city, the focus is more so on the individual funds themselves, so, but I did want to briefly mention that is one component of your financial statements. But again, this, this does bring me to the second component of your financial statements, which is give all these fund-level statements. As I said, this is what you all typically see throughout the year. This component focuses on individual parts of the government, and it reports your city's operations in more detail in that of the government-wide statements. And of all the funds that you all have, you know, finding your shoes of primary interest to me is your general fund. It's the main operating fund of the city, therefore, it's where the majority of your revenues are received and your funds are expended. We have a couple charts on page six of your auditors' discussion analysis that break down the general funds revenues expenses for the year. Look at your total revenue to general fund, around five, around four point seven million dollars this year. That's an increase around five hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars compared to prior year. You have three significant sources to you all, is for most revenues, property taxes, obviously is a, is a huge revenue source for you all, as well as other taxes and intergovernmental revenue. Property tax around two point six million dollars this year. Other taxes, and when I say other taxes, that's your insurance premium tax, that's your alcohol tax, that's your franchise tax. That was around one point two million dollars this year, and your intergovernmental revenue was right at four hundred twenty-two thousand dollars for the year. The second chart on bottom of page shows your expenditures, which is around six point four million dollars, that's around five hundred sixty-seven thousand dollar increase compared to prior year, so your general fund expenditures, they really increased relative to your increase in revenues for the year. Once again, no surprise, public safety is a significant expenditure item for you all, it's around three point two billion. So, you know, total, total expenses is six point four. Public safety essentially accounts for around fifty percent of your general fund expenditures. That's really right in line with what we typically see, anywhere from forty to sixty percent, so, you know, again, you all, you all fall right in line with, as far as your public safety expenditures, as far as the percentage of the total expenditures of your general fund. Couple other expenditure items worth noting, you all have that culture and recreation expenditure around one point five million for the year, and general government expenditures of eight hundred twelve thousand dollars. At the factor end, other financing sources such as transfers in from other funds and the sale of property, the general fund's fund balance decreases by approximately three hundred twenty-three thousand dollars for an ending fund balance of two point one million dollars. When I talk about fund balance, one thing I always like to remind people, fund balance is not what you all have in the form of cash, as soon as you see fit. Fund balance is merely the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which is cash on hand. Additionally, one thing to keep in mind, the general fund encourages expenditures across with five hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars per month. So, if you all have a June thirty year end, it's good to see that the city has a, has a fund balance equal to around four months of operating expenditures as of year end, and that's needed, just to cover you all through the months of July through October, when your revenues are typically down before your property tax revenue comes in. So, again, good-looking, good-looking fund balance in your general fund for June thirty year end. Aside from the general fund, you all have numerous other governmental funds. This includes your special revenue funds, your capital projects funds. For the sake of time, I won't go into those in detail, but they all are in good state financing as well. Couple of the funds I do want to briefly mention, all your city's enterprise funds, whichever, water supply fund, your sanitation fund, and your store water fund. Again, enterprise funds, they're used to account for operations in a manner similar to private sector business. You know, the goal of these funds, the objective of these funds are all to be self-sufficient and for them to generate sufficient operating revenues to cover their operating expenses. And as you can see, we have the chart on page eight of our auditors' discussion analysis, each of these three funds did that this year. All three funds had operating revenue, and they all generated positive operating cash flows, which again, is what you want to see out of your, out of your enterprise funds. The third and final component of your financial statements are your footnotes. The footnotes disclose the city's accounting methods, as well as provide an expanded explanation of your operational financial results. There really weren't any significant changes to your footnotes this year, so unless anybody has any specific questions, I won't go into those in detail. But one final item to discuss with you all, again, is just some information that the auditing standards require that we communicate. Again, with you all having a clean opinion with no audit findings, this is essentially a formality, but we had no difficulties or disagreements in dealing with management. We had no uncorrected misstatements, and again, we are independent of the city as required by auditing standards. So, amid that, you know, unless anybody has any, any specific questions, that concludes my presentation. Again, as you can see, there's quite a bit of information in this report, but what I've tried to do is just hit the highlights of what I think is supposed to report us to you all. But again, if there's anything that you all have questions about that I didn't touch on, please don't hesitate to ask. But again, just want to thank your staff for their hard work this year. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you all and look forward to working in the future.
Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, I appreciate the comments, Ms. Carroll here, she does a outstanding job for us, and I know that the county process changes, seems like almost every quarter, there's some change to the county process.
It does.
They're doing that since years, since the state of Georgia created their own new county system. But I appreciate all your comments on everything too, but everything else, everybody's running. Get an opportunity to read this, you see some definitions in here that you may not have seen before, of things, and they're very, very odd, very odd, just good, I mean.
Absolutely.
Definitions are there, and you may see some questions in the answers that you may have had before in the past, and I appreciate that aspect of this thing too. Thank you very much again.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Out number three is a discussion council department. You know, it's sort of brought my attention here recently that Councilmember Bird now being on, down here with us full-time, but he's not over any department. So, my thought, now, just me myself, my thought was perhaps that it be over the city departments administration area.
General government.
General government, so he can see what's going on in that area in there and look and talk to each other. And Councilman Wright has agreed, believe you, support that idea?
Yes, sir.
Okay? So, what I'd like to do is just get a motion to do that, and put it over that for the remainder of this fiscal year.
I move that we give Councilman Bird the responsibility for general government for the remainder of this year.
On second motion?
Motion of the second. Further discussion, I don't think. See you then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All vote same time? I'm not going to congratulate you or not.
Happen, happens sometimes.
I know. So, once it's live, we will actually, everybody go around again, and that still gives you one department, doesn't it?
Me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Me and Chief Duncan, back here.
All right.
Got plenty to do.
You'll enjoy that.
You'll enjoy that. I guess the good people working over there, they'll explain to you what's going on.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, and I guess the last thing we have is Thomas from the council. Post one, any comments, please?
Just thank you for, you know, trying to get, get me a little bit of responsibility. I think I've had a little bit of time to get my feet wet a little bit and understand how things work, so this is just one more thing that I need to learn. I would forward to it.
Good. Post two, please.
Before we get started tonight, I was sitting down here, and I was talking to Councilmember Bird, and I was talking about these, the reports we have from Malden Jenkins. I think this is the first one that you've, you've been doing this, and I said, I didn't even open them up, but I didn't even look at them, I said, this guy's going to come up here and tell us that there's absolutely nothing to report, and he's a little shocked that there's nothing to report, that that never happens, because that's what seems to happen every year when we get our audit back, and so that is just a testament to all of our city departments and our department heads, but particularly in this case, Carol and Kristen, and all of the folks that work, and to make sure that we're not only doing things well, but also dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's and others above, so, always grateful for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Post three, please.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything to say, but I, but thank you, everyone, for all your work. We appreciate it.
Post four.
So, as Councilman Wright knows, that is, the whole year of budget starts with the budget meeting. Sit down and review on the budget and going through each department's requests and requirements, and that, and that doesn't happen without having some very good, very good department heads coming prepared. Carol's prepared to work with us on, and developing and executing the budget, and this is the appropriate result that we're looking for. Couple of key words I heard mentioned was a clean opinion, highest level of assurance, and zero audit findings. You know, that's what, you know, that's what everybody would like to get to, but that's where we're at, and again, thank you, Carol, thank you for... thank you for, uh, all the department heads, for everybody's hard work, and, and, and the mayor council, because it doesn't go without saying that, that we have to have a partner as well, so I think as, as a city in general, everybody's done a great job. Very proud to be a part of it, uh, and that's all I got there.
Thank you very much, and they're all absolutely correct, they're all our department heads working with Ms. Carol, doing a great job of making sure our process works, and it doesn't work, and I know all citizens out there can be very proud of, of, uh, the administration here in the city, you know, I, I know I'm very proud of them, I, I thank y'all very, very much for that. I think that was a great audit, uh, process, you know, I, I enjoyed reading this thing, it was, uh, very interesting, you see some of the detail, they actually went into explaining what they were doing and what, the way they were exploring it, so, this is available for public review if anybody wants to look at one, and you certainly welcome to come up here and do that.
It's posted on our website, and it's also, um...
Posted on the website, and you can pull up and read it.
Posted with Vincent Institute, yeah.
That's right, that's right.
Same with our budget.
It's something for a city this size to be able to not have any problems, any audit problems whatsoever, you know, that's, been that way since I've been mayor, so I've been very fortunate to have a team to make sure that it doesn't happen, it's the team that does it, it's not us up here, you know, we start to oversee the thing, it was the team to make sure that the application is done correctly, and that's, that's important, and I recognize that, you know, that's a, a unique thing to have. And, that being said, everybody be careful of this coronavirus out there, and stay away from it, if possible you can, I know as we're, House and County starting to level off, go down maybe just a little bit, but it's still out there, so, uh, you know, I was saying it's not quite as bad as it used to be, you know, this new one is not as bad, but still it's not pleasant to have, the people I've talked to have, they go through two or three days of being sick, like having a very bad cold suffer, it's still unpleasant. With that, everybody have a great week, thank you so much, good night, everybody.